All right.
Well, well, well.
It'll just be like, okay, that's probably easier that way.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll welcome everyone and we'll start with roll call.
Chuck Howard.
Present.
Ann Slaimaker.
Present.
Judy Murphy.
Present.
Jefferson Lynch.
Present.
Caitlin Maxwell.
Vice Chair Ursula Kruzeleke.
Chair Cindy Olsen.
Thank you.
All right. The agenda approval.
I'll move through it. Oh, seven.
All in favor? Approving agenda?
Yes.
Motion carries, agenda is approved. Public comment?
I don't have anyone online.
And nobody is in the mood. No public comment.
Okay. Conflict of interest, any of us?
No.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from May 7th, 2025.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th, 2025?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from May 7th?
Aye.
Any additions or changes? Motion carries, minutes are approved. General updates.
Um, I have a few general updates. I wanted to talk briefly about the comprehensive plan. Um, I included a meetings wire about some upcoming meetings, but I wanted to note that I've had to change the day of the zoning and land use meeting to July 8th because there was a conflict. Um, but I have a few meetings coming up, that one and 125th. It'll be kind of fun if anyone wants to sit in on kind of like a roundtable chat about, um, you know, neighborhood charm and historic preservation and zoning and what, you know, people want to see. I think there'll be pretty good meetings if I can get decent attendance. Um, the other big update is about the survey. I officially have over 50 responses now, which feels decent. I'd like to get another 50 responses to kind of get the over 5% response, which is kind of what you, I've read you, you should look for. So if anyone hasn't taken the survey, has a free 10 minutes, um, I can send you the link. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was about, oh, the progress on affordable housing definitions. You know, at the last meeting, we talked quite a lot about, you know, what actually is affordable and we talked about that chart that shows that we're lumped in with Denver. Um, and so it makes it look a lot higher, like rents look a lot higher than they really probably ought to be to be affordable in this community. Since last meeting, I had a similar conversation with council and city council basically had the exact same response, I would say. So, um, I'm going to keep working on ways to kind of get data on what actually is affordable and what we really want to support, um, moving forward before we, um, you know, revisit like the incentive programs and things like that to actually encourage, um, additional growth through incentives or subsidies and things like that. So that's not on the agenda tonight, obviously, because I have to do more work on it.
Are you still looking at a more kind of nuanced definition than just like this? Like, once it hits this dollar value, anything below is affordable, anything above is not? Like, we, we kind of talked offline about affordability, like rating or grade or like affordability goals, like does this project meet how many of our goals? Or just any, anything more nuanced and just a straight up on off definition of affordability?
I think, I think that's a good idea. You know, there are a lot of places that kind of have a sort of ranking system just in general for housing or for any project in that matter. So there's some examples you could go off of that are kind of specific to housing, you know, and maybe you say these are the list of goals and it goes along nicely with these lists. If you achieve some percentage of it, then yeah, you're, you're eligible. So I think more to come on that, but because it's more nuanced, it will definitely take some additional time on my end before we can really present anything that would be, you know, useful to review, I guess. So, but more to come on that. Um, then, yeah, I think the only other update, just in case people haven't seen the flyers, is about Furling's Fest this weekend, which is like a dog friendly, dog centric event on Minor Street, Saturday from 11 to 7:00. There's like dog adoptions and a bunch of activities and I'll be out there with some companies and plan stuff and like some coloring book things and, um, should be pretty fun. So if anyone's around this weekend, um, and wants to see a bunch of dogs, I'd say come down to Minor Street. And, um, that's it for me.
Are you going to be in the park?
Um, Sadie said that I would be activated in one of the vendor stalls, but she's not sure which one yet.
Who?
Or I'm not sure which one, she probably knows.
Okay. Thank you. New business. First one is ordinance number 11, series 2025, ordinance amending sections 2115, 2150, 2163, 21106, and 21127 of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code to adjust regulations pertaining to accessory drawing units in response to House Bill 241152 in making conforming amendments in connection here with.
Yeah, so, yes, so this one, obviously we've talked about ADUs for the past couple of meetings. Um, this draft ordinance builds on last month's discussion where we said, basically, achieve all these minimum requirements or even more, then we're eligible for different, um, funding sources and, um, I have a little bit more information on that. I talked with someone from DOLA in the interim between that meeting and he had some really interesting thoughts on how we could use potential funding to encourage ADU development. Um, so I think it's really in our interest to go, you know, the full distance and comply with this House Bill 24-1152. Um, the big items from, that would be changes are allowing the ADUs in more zone districts and, um, analysis of lots in those own districts show that we probably could get if every single house in those districts wanted to build, we could get six, about 60 ADUs in those homes, which obviously 60 people are not going to build ADUs, but it increases the eligibility quite, quite a lot, which, you know, could lead to more ADUs. Um, the second is just clarifying the review procedures for ADUs. This is a pretty minor, um, minor thing. Basically, we would just review them all administratively, like, like we would a building permit. Um, we clarify the use of ADUs, we clarify the size of ADUs to allow any, um, property to have an ADU of up to 750 square feet or up to 50% of the primary residence, whichever is larger. So that way, if you had a 5,000 square foot home, you could build a larger ADU. Um, change the setbacks to make it so that you only have a five foot side rear setback, which is required by law.
What are they now?
Uh, it would depend on the zoning district, but in most residential districts, side setbacks are already five feet. Rear setbacks vary in like R1, R2, they're 15 feet, for example. So the front would remain 15 feet, the rear would be reduced to five feet, which aligns with like sheds and greenhouses and things like that. Um, and then the last one is about parking. Basically, it's kind of a convoluted definition on how you, how we can require parking, but functionally, it, House Bill 24-1152 would eliminate off-street parking requirements in most situations. There'd be a few situations where we could require off-street parking still per the change, but yeah, I would say in general, we'd be eliminating the need for parking. If you want to build an ADU, you'd be able to use street, street parking for that or your existing off-street. Um, so with all of that, um, we largely are aligning with the requirements the state has already. And so the big, you know, only thing we really are doing more of is allowing it in more districts than we really have to, which doesn't seem to have much of a negative implication in allowing a little bit more flexibility in the size of the ADUs. And so, um, I think that's where we landed last time. And so as a result, staff recommend that, that make a motion approving this ordinance and then we take it to council.
I have a question. I'm just thinking about this. Um, what if the current, the current owner, the property owner, um, or the property, owner's property consists of more than one city lot? And they decide to build an ADU on the lot that is not the one that their house is on? They build the ADU and a few years later, they decide to sell and they want to sell the properties separately and they do that.
I think it would depend on how the lots are situated. Like, for example, my house in town is technically on, it's kind of made, the lot is made out of multiple lots, like a lot are. I wouldn't, but the way mine is organized, I guess, I really only have one unit density anyway. And so I could, if I built an ADU, I couldn't then split it. In a case where someone has two lots that are adjacent, but not combined, I guess, then I guess you could.
Well, by the definition, it says in the same lot. So if they had to be combined, then it wouldn't be an ADU, I guess.
You could just build a house on that lot.
Yeah.
Just build a tiny house.
An ADU, you could just build, you know, your, it would be a primary residence. It wouldn't be accessory to your other house. But there's a few cases where the opposite is sort of true. Like they have two houses on the lot, but it's only one lot now. It's kind of been combined over time. And so in that case, you either have to subdivide to split them or you'd have to just designate one an ADU, I guess. Um, some, but you know, that's kind of an incomplete question because there are some odd, strange lot configurations in town. You know, there's like some people that are on like eight platted lots, but it's functionally one, you know, I think it like sells this one lot, you know? Sorry, not a great answer, but.
I would say to your original question, the answer is no. If they have two lots and the house is on one lot, the ADU would have to be on that lot with the house. Unless it's like what Dylan said, where you're just making a new house on the other lot.
Okay. And then that would have to have the same, um, they would have to meet the same qualifications for just a house on a lot.
Right. Or you could, I guess, go through and officially combine the lots and just have it be one lot and you've kind of eliminated any other need, ability to like create new primary residences, but now you could just have an ADU on it. Yeah.
But then you couldn't sell it later, you know, separate.
Right. Right.
Great. Great question, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? Yeah?
Yeah. Well, I'll, uh, oh, yeah, I guess. Uh, well, I'll move to recommend the approval of ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty five, and ordinance amending sections twenty one fifteen, twenty one fifty, twenty one sixty three, twenty one one oh six and twenty one one oh seven of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code to adjust regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units in response to House Bill twenty four eleven fifty two and making conforming amendments in the connection there with.
All right. Shall we vote?
Second.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Ordinance eleven, series twenty twenty five passes. Moving on to resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty five, a resolution establishing affordable housing policies in compliance with proposition one twenty three.
Okay, just as a quick reminder overview, this is a requirement that we have to meet. Basically, we have to formally commit to reviewing a complete application for a portable housing project within ninety days of submittal. Um, and basically, we already do this for pretty much every project, but we need to formally recognize that we will commit to doing it. And so we've drafted this resolution that states a commitment for it, just broadly, states a commitment to scheduling special meetings for projects, meeting affordable housing definitions, um, in order to hit the ninety days and commit to developing checklists and guides that sort of help developers and property owners more quickly comply with requirements. And so the one big note here that's relevant, I think, is that, um, as it's written, you know, for this expedited review, it would be housing meeting the state's definition of affordable housing, which as we, you know, touched on just a few minutes ago, we want a more nuanced definition to, to support, you know, projects that really meet all of our goals. It's clear that some of these projects, even though they're affordable for the state, probably don't really achieve all the goals we want, but nevertheless, we sort of have to do this to comply with, with the state. And it still would bring in housing that, you know, is at sixty percent of that definition and a, for rentals. And so it still is better than nothing, I suppose, in that sense. And in the future, in order to support even lower development, we can keep working on that more nuanced definition that works on, um, subsidies and incentives and things like that. So with that in mind, you know, this seems like basically the minimum that we sort of need to do in order to meet this proposition one, two, three requirements. And so we recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay. Do you want to add a motion?
Uh, I'll move to approve resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty five, resolution establishing affordable housing policies in compliance with proposition one two three.
All right.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries.
No.
We will, whatever resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty five is approved. Okay, we will move on to old business.
Don't think we have any old business tonight.
Any updates on the Argo mine, how are they doing? So now we talked about that they were planning on having that done by this winter. Have you heard anything else?
Sure. Um, yeah, some brief update on that. They, they've poured all of their, they're almost finished or they have finished in a day or two, all of the water peak for the big piers for the gondola. And so that ties into the whole trails that have still been closed because of construction. We're shooting for those to be opened like within the next week or so. Um, and so the Argo is, so anyway, that would be sort of phase one of their project. They've told me that it would be early to mid-July, they'd be flying in all of the big piers. Um, so it'd be like one man, you'd see like helicopters with eighteen big, you know, piers coming in and being dropped off. And then at the top, they've done a ton of work already. I was up there not that long ago and it's pretty impressive how much they've already gotten done. And if you look down at the bottom, not that much has changed yet, other than moving, I mean, dirt around. But they're still gearing up, I think, for it to be open prior before spring of next year. So like they're on schedule to be less than a year out at this point.
I did notice that they started construction on the parking garage and I thought that was going to wait until later.
Well, so they're doing in this kind of first phase to get operational, um, a slightly modified parking arrangement at the bottom. They're still required to do parking at the bottom, but in this first phase, they're only going to do one level there and in front of the mercantile do parking as well. So it's all surface level, but basically they've eliminated all of the bottom activation in front of the mercantile in favor of parking so that they don't have to go vertical on the parking until, um, several conditions are met, basically. So I think the garage structure would be a year or two out beyond when they open, but they're still committed to doing that.
Right, because we're going to see a lot of extra traffic, of course, with that entire park up there as well and, uh, fair amount of people, so.
Right. And, and part of the, um, conditions when the final development plan was approved is that after one year of operation, they would do a parking and traffic study. And so that will also inform sort of after one year of use, what actually is the need on site. So, um, that'll allow, I guess, the city and Argo to see what's actually needed and make, figure out a solution to actually solve that problem would be the hope of that commission.
Right. And sorry, and sorry, everybody, now we're all done. In that same vein, um, there was a resolution that we passed as a city this last year for the exchange of property for connecting that park as well. And I think it was Gilson Gulch, is that right?
Yeah, so.
What's the status on that? Do you have one?
I do. It's the council, there was some back and forth with some language, but it got approved with the vote of the people last fall. Basically, council approved the ordinance for like formally exchanging it via ordinance last month. And so we're just waiting for the like, um, three day legal posting to record those and then move forward with annexation and zoning of the parcels that we're receiving as part of that. So I think those will be ready for next month. You guys will hear the zoning annexation, since it'll be city owned, just doesn't need formal finding commission approval, I guess, but the zoning would. And so that should be coming before.
And then we'll wait for zoning to be completed and approved before we're developing and start on that section as well, then?
That would be my understanding from a functional standpoint, like we wouldn't be starting on any of that. I don't know, and this would be getting in the weeds, but like technically, if it wasn't annexed and was still in the county, I guess you could still develop trail, but then you might have to go through a county like permitting process, which you'd want to avoid, I suppose, if possible.
Just because, yeah, I know it's going to help open up some of that traffic over there as well for, for access to the trails. Um, I think it's going to be great, like maybe a conflict of interest. I live directly across the street from that section, that parcel there, so.
Right, yeah, that's true. So anyway, I don't think it would be a conflict from the voting standpoint.
No, I'm, I'm totally excited about it, so. By all means, I'm glad to hear updates about it, so.
Of course, yeah. And if, um, for next month's meeting, I will plan to have any other updates on that to, to put into my update section, so.
Did you say they're planning on being open by August? Is that what you said again?
No, I, well, the trails will be open again.
Oh.
A week or two, I suppose. Um, but I think the gondola will be operational. Their goal was by like spring of next.
Yeah.
Year or winter, really, but it's pretty funny.
And residents are still getting free rides, right?
Well, I don't know.
But this policy.
I don't know, there was nothing required as part of any of our whole processes, but they've said throughout the whole process that, that's been tried, but I don't know if any condition is so.
I've heard of black updates, there might be some black updates.
Okay, okay.
So there will be all the regulations or we've got, you know, rules on that. I've heard, I don't know.
I'm, I'm excited to see what ends up happening with that as well as the fellow ordinance.
Me too.
Oh, yeah, I'm stoked. It's going to be, um, it's going to make us a destination, um, in more ways of this one. So over the summer as well, because, you know, we have Echo Mountain, of course, for winter destination stuff, so. I think really good for the city. Um, obviously, we need as much traffic for tourism as possible, it'll support us, so.
Anything else that should come before the commission?
I don't have anything else tonight.
No.
Is the next meeting, is it July first?
Um, next meeting would be scheduled for the second. Yeah, then if it's meeting, um, normal first Wednesday of the month, so July second. And we will be planning to have that meeting, so if anyone has issues because of like July fourth plans, let me know as soon as you can, because if we don't think we'll have a forum or people just don't want to meet that week because of holiday, I, I could reschedule. But I will be here.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.